Okay, welcome to the City Council Ordinance Committee meeting of April 25th, 2023. It's 6:00 PM. We do have some minutes to approve. Tom, I'm not sure if you were able to take a look at those.
Well, I was, but I wasn't there for the most recent.
So you're gonna stay in for it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would be, oh geez, what did I do? I'd be happy to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So we're gonna do all three at once?
Let's just do, let's do all three at once.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, unless...
I think I was absent from two of them, so we can just make that easy.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, it sounds good.
So do, let me see the dates here, if I can find them. I did something too mu-- oh, okay. So we have February 21st, March 7th, and April 11th. Anybody wanna make a motion about those?
Um, I'm, uh, I move to approve the meeting minutes for February 21st, March 7th, and April 11th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any extensions?
Aye.
Okay. Perfect, motion passes. Um, so, let's take a, get me back to where I was. A moment. Public speak. I don't think any, we have anybody here for public speak, which is fine. We do have new business, and, and so, I wasn't planning on delving deep into this today. Um, the data collector. But maybe if you give us a quick intro, then we can set another meeting and then we'll tackle it then.
Um, so I'll kinda give a brief introduction to it, and then if Christine wants to add anything. So with the Assessor's Department, it just seems that like, um, houses and properties and stuff like that aren't getting the right assessments, and therefore the city ends up kinda losing money because things aren't being valued correctly. Um, you know, and having this position would kind of give us a frontline person who would be going out gathering that information, that supporting data to kinda help us evaluate houses and properties according to their actual estimates.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will let Christine kind of expand a little bit more on that, cuz I am not well-versed in the assessor process, so.
So we're looking to add a data collector. The office did have it years ago, and they got rid of it. Um, we do have a company that helps out with it, um, but they charge $20 per inspection.
Yeah.
And so sometimes it's as easy as looking, yes, they have a pool, $20. So if we hire someone, they might, we might be able to give them a street, and they can do eight and a half an hour, which eight times 20 would be a lot more than what we're paying someone. And as you know, East Hampton's growing and growing, so in our assessor's office takes on more duties. So to have just like an assessor to keep doing this is just, it's not a good idea. And the company we're using, we're finding, has made a lot of mistakes.
Okay.
And we need growth to balance the budget, and the assessor we have now has not found, just found $85,000 worth of growth. So there's a lot more that's out there that's wellness, so.
Absolutely.
Having to have a data collector in the office has a lot of benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this would be like a part-time position too, so, you know, just enough to kinda get those inspections out there, but, yeah.
I think that's a good introduction. I mean, I don't know how much more information we're really gonna need. I mean, it seems like a pretty straightforward, but I think it does deserve us to be able to like sit with it, and then I think what we'll do is we'll just pick it up at our next meeting.
Absolutely.
And, um, you know, I, I think that way we can formulate some questions around, you know, um, because obviously $85,000 of new growth is not, like, if you try to get a contractor, they're all busy because they're all working, like, upgrading people's houses right now, so that's, that's, that's not a thing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, obviously there's a need for that, so.
Plus, the state is on us more to do more inspections, and we have to do 10% each year, which is about 600 to 700 parcels.
Oh, okay.
Um, which, because of low staff, hasn't been getting done, and we have to do this.
Okay. Okay. That's good. Do you guys have any questions before we?
No, sounds like a good idea.
Okay, awesome. So what we'll do is, um, appreciate the introduction, we'll set our next meeting, um, and I'll, would it be easier for me to email you, let you know when it is?
Yeah, that's fine. You can do it on the web.
Yep, okay. Um, and then we'll just, um, I don't think this is gonna take a long time. This is pretty, pretty easy.
Pretty sure, or it's only gonna benefit the city.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Okay, Chief, that brings us to you.
Mm-hmm.
And so, now, this one, I think, is a little bit more complicated.
Not by holdup.
Um, and so, Tom, you'll see, yeah, not by Tom, but you will see that I forwarded you the most updated language.
Right, right.
And there's a, um, and so, since we haven't actually had you here yet to give us the intro, so do you wanna just let us know what this is all about?
So with regard to traffic enforcement and control, we're finding ourselves more and more, uh, in need of people to help out do traffic so projects can get completed. The problem that we're having is the feds are throwing so much money at infrastructure that every single department in the Commonwealth is, can't provide police officers. So we call our neighbors, and they can't provide police officers to help us out. So, and most of those cases, jobs, construction stops until we can schedule police officers to, and it just, it drives the planner absolutely crazy, drives the DPD director crazy. But we have to have, um, safety measures in place for the military public. So what most of these cities and towns across the Commonwealth have done is created these civilian traffic, uh, control officers. And essentially, they would, if there's civilians coming in, they would go to, uh, flag your school, get certified flag your cards, and, um, under the CMR, that would give them the, um, the law gives them permission to be in the roadway. So Mark Tanner and I were going back and forth a long time about this, and neither one of us could find an ordinance in the entire Commonwealth, um, until we stumbled upon Tons, which will be drafted hours after. And it just makes good sense to put an ordinance in place, and the city has a law that allows these folks to also be in the road in addition to the CMR. So the only change in that one, um, since, since I had sent it to you, was, uh, the retired, uh, public safety personnel who have been doing traffic for 30-plus years, uh, the ordinance allows them to not have to go through the traffic, um, uh, flag school essentially, cuz they've been doing it for ever, never, never, never. And they're, you know, the retirees, or the most, sorry, well, most of them are retired from our job anyway, we're doing it for years. So we have the retirees coming in, and we have civilians coming in, and the civilians have to do the flag school, they have to get CPR, um, and then they have to buy their own equipment, um, you know, the vests and the jackets, um, and the rate is the same as the police officer rate. The only difference is the police office, not rate, but the police officers have first, we have a computer system that generates all of these details, and the, uh, police officers, the full-time police officers, first write a refusal, then it goes to the retirees, uh, then it goes to the civilians.
Okay.
And there's a formula by hours that distributes it equally amongst those tiers.
Okay.
And then the city gets 10% for an admin fee on every single one of those jobs. So the city does generate some revenue.
Just fine.
And we've got probably the biggest, busiest summer in my career coming up.
Yeah.
So it's, that's why we're gonna try to push this thing forward and get it through the council so we can, uh, get these folks out there.
And so you said that they, um, they get, everybody gets paid the same?
Yep.
Whether you're a civilian or...
Right. And there's a robust, and it's all paid by the contractors, so it's, the city doesn't, it doesn't cost the city, um, and there is, um, there's a significant necessity for it. And when, in the wintertime, when the jobs drop off, you know, the, the police officers would get, would get them contractually, they get them anyway, um, and then the civilians probably won't be working much in the winter, but certainly during the summer, we need all the help we can get. And again, we're in the same boat as every other city and town around us. Northampton has TCOs, Westfield has a very robust program, uh, Hadley, Greif Field, um, so we've, we've kind of, you know, been circling around for quite some time with it, uh, but Mark and I both agree that having an ordinance in place for the city out of the traffic rules is, I think it's a good, good rule.
Yep, it seems like a mix. And this is like, I mean, it seems like in other places, um, they have civilian flaggers, like, that's pretty standard.
Yeah.
I've never seen them in Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Maybe I have.
They are now, they're all...
I've seen them more recently.
Yeah, they're all over now.
Yeah.
There's actually a company, uh, a retired state police major and a retired Connecticut trooper formulated a company, they formed a company, uh, where they bring people in, they certify them, and then their company distributes them around the Commonwealth.
Okay.
But they make like 30 bucks an hour off the back of the civilians, on top of what the contractors are paying. So that's not, I don't think that's sensible for us anyway.
And, um, the administrative fee, does the, um, does that get paid for out of the project funds, or does that get paid for by the flagger who is getting paid?
No, it comes out, it comes out of the rate, the 10% comes out of the rate that the contractors are paying.
Okay.
And then if they, if they need a cruiser, like, let's say they have a, they're doing work on the mountain, they need a cruiser, we charge $20 an hour for the cruiser, to the, to the contractors, um, for the one you're tearing on the cruise.
Yep.
And there certainly are some, you know, there are, there are jobs, especially at night, where they definitely need a cruiser.
Absolutely.
And on top of that, I have a very robust policy that the ordinance refers to, uh, that really does a deep dive into what they can do, what they can't do, what, what they're allowed to do, what they should be doing and shouldn't be doing.
Okay.
I can, I'm happy to get that too, please see that too.
Okay, yeah, if this refers to it, I think that would be good.
Yeah.
Um, have any questions?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, this is, it's not really important, but is the individuals of good moral character, was that just from the Tonsan language?
Yeah, yeah.
I sort of wonder, like, how do we determine that?
Well, it's, it's a great question, Counselor, because I, I have to sign off on peddler's license, I have to, uh, hawkers and peddlers, I gotta sign off on, um, raffle permits, and it's the same language, people of good moral character, I'm like, I don't know what these people got. At least these ones, we're gonna know who they are, 'cause we're interviewing them, we're doing backgrounds on them.
I guess if you know their name, know them by name.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. But yeah, it's, 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 I'm guessing it's common law language, but it's the same as the Hawker Peddler Ordinance and the same as the, uh, the raffle.
That's funny.
And the Chief of Police has, I saw you get a call from, um, Barbara's office all the time, can you come over and sign these raffle permits?
Hmm.
I'm like, I don't think it's that good.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I mean, you know, I think like I, I had said at the, our previous meeting, um, you know, I come from a state where this kind of stuff is just standard practice, and it has been for decades, and it, it, it was a blind spot for me, because I've, I've been here now for 11 years, and it hadn't occurred to me that that wasn't the standard here in Massachusetts. And then when I started to think back on it, I'm like, yeah, you're right, every time there's a construction project, uh, one of your officers is out doing that, and, you know, where I come from, I mean, just out in like cornfield and dairy farm roads, I mean, they're literally just dairy farmers with signs saying stop and go, and they have lock the tappies, and, you know, so obviously, I mean, this is still far more structured than that, but, you know, this is, this is something that states have been using for decades, and it works, so.
And one thing I'll add is with the advent of the Police Reform Bill and the Post Commission, it, it's nearly impossible for the retirees to keep up their post-certification standard with the training that, that we all have to do, cuz even though they're retired, they still have to keep up the same amount of training that the full-time police officers do. Uh, so it's just too cumbersome for them to do that. So when they step out on the street as a, as a traffic control officer, they don't have police powers, they don't carry a gun, they got a radio, and they're good witnesses, and direct traffic.
Yeah.
And for the most part, we haven't had any issues, or I haven't heard of any issues either, of people not differentiate between the traffic control officer and what would be a potential police officer there tomorrow.
Right, I agree.
Okay, I mean, I don't, I don't have any big questions, and we know that Solicitor Tanner has reviewed it, um, so, but I think, you know, I'll check in with Omar and see if he wants, just have him take another look at the final language, just to, but I don't know if that's necessarily, you know...
Yeah, like I said, it's just essentially changed East Hampton and Tons, Mark's the one that sent it to me.
Right. Yeah, now, so I think the, Mark had a couple of things, he was asking about, um, workers' comp insurance.
Yeah, and Emily can speak to that.
Yeah, so it's covered under the city's workers.
It is covered.
Yeah.
And so liability, probably umbrella policy.
Yeah, yeah, all that would be under, confirmed with our insurance company.
Okay. Equipment, and so they would pay for their own equipment?
Yep.
And, um, limitations on when city, current city employees may work is a TCO. So, um, I wonder what that means, is that like conflict of interest stuff, like if Emily wanted to work as a TCO on the weekend?
It's, it's, that, that'll be policy-driven, that'll be in the policy.
Okay.
And so we're gonna meet with Emily in the mayor's office in Hammerhill for, for any city employees, and a lot of cities and towns, they give the city employees this bonus opportunity to work these jobs.
Because technically, like, you're working for the contracting company, so...
Right, you're not working for the city.
So it's not a conflict of interest, it's, right.
No.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this language the way it is right now, I, I think that, you know, unless you guys wanna digest it further, um, I've been looking at this for a little while now, and I still can't, other than the questions that the solicitor asked, I was, it's like, this seems pretty basic, so.
I'm fine with it. I think, you know, I was a little surprised that the civilians make the same rate, um, but if the city's not paying it anyway, it's not really fiscal.
No, and I kind of, that's, that's the rates of contractors, for the most part, when they put the jobs to contractors, it's the same rate.
Right.
Because we could have a civilian tomorrow, a police officer the next day.
Right, sure.
And that's all dependent on, on the, uh, police union's contract.
Okay.
Okay.
So it goes through, through the, it's based on the policing contracts, or, or is this like a prevailing wage number that's...
No, it's a police unit contract.
Okay, okay.
And each city and town, for the most part, is different, cuz each city and town, police department have their own contracts.
Okay.
But the rates are within a couple dollars of each other, four hundred and two dollars of each other.
Right, okay.
So the contractors, that's, they expect to pay that, they know they're gonna pay it. We haven't had any issues at all.
Okay. Yeah, sounds good to me.
So I, I would entertain a motion.
Um, sure, I'll make a motion to recommend, uh, that the city ordinances be amended to include a Section 7-6 civilian, uh, traffic control officers.
Sounds good.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes, which means, um, at our first May meeting, I'll set a public hearing for it. Um, I'll check in with Omar just to see, make sure he doesn't wanna get it reviewed any further, but I think we're good.
Yeah, I accept that, I think, so he has it.
Alright, well, that was easy. And, um, so, we also, in our continuing business, we have the LED sign things, I don't, I don't know if you guys wanna, no, you, oh, so Tom, you weren't here for that one?
Right, I mean, yeah, I have a feeling I know what that's about, but why don't you...
Yeah, I mean, you know, so, so basically, um, historically, we, I think it was 2015, saw the potential for, you know, electronic signs being more widely available, and, um, gas stations were starting to change over, um, and so I drafted up an ordinance back then to allow it, and it failed, because people didn't want East Hampton to become Las Vegas, that's what we're, that's what we're gonna turn into.
We always thought of that.
And then, and then, uh, I think it was, uh, the Roberts Station did a, like, a refresh, probably like 26, I don't know, it was around that time, and they just put up, they just put up a LED sign for their gas prices.
Mm-hmm.
And so we went back to the drawing board, and we're like, this actually is like crazy, like, making people go outside and like hail, and like snow and ice to go change the, because the price fluctuates.
Right, yeah.
And so we passed the LED gas station sign ordinance, and at that time, we're like, well, how about other messaging centers? You know, like, if a school wanted to put, uh, electronic messaging, cuz Pepin had, had been talking about it, and so we wrote an ordinance for that, like, really complete, we actually, I, somehow I got connected with, um, because I think it was when we were doing the sign ordinances, I got connected with a, a model electronic messaging center ordinance, so we kind of tweaked that and brought it forward, and thought it was gonna pass, no problem. It just about didn't pass, but it passed with a restriction that it was only allowed in mill industrial.
Okay.
So right now, in the city of East Hampton, if you wanna have an electronic messaging center sign, which is any sign that is electronic, you can...
Which includes some ones that the city uses.
You can only have it in a mill industrial district.
Okay, so we're breaking the law right now, that's what I'm saying.
So, um, so, you know, and so basically what we talked about the other day was, um, either a couple of different things, opening up to say these restrictions are gonna be applicable, and we're going to allow this in certain zones.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so, for example, if the Congregational Church, I know that they had expressed an interest in getting one of these signs that they could put community messages on, and, you know, and I think one of the things I think would be helpful is if we have these messaging centers in, like, at the church, or at places that are at high visibility, to have some sort of, you know, agreement with, or, or some sort of option in the ordinance to say, hey, if we have a community emergency, can you display this message, you know, um, but that's later to figure out. Or we could say municipal exemption, so any sign on municipal property is exempt from this ordinance, that would be easy. Um, and then, uh, you know, the other one is to kind of go into the weeds and just like really redo the whole thing and, and take a, a fresh new look at it. Um, so that's kind of where we're at right now. Um, now, here's the, here's the interesting part, we have electronic messaging signs that are portable, that are for wayfinding. Technically, those fall under the, the definition of this ordinance, so I think that those even are...
Well, they're LED, for sure.
They're definitely LED, and they're definitely have a displayed message, I mean, if you, if you, um...
Most signs we put on, like, we'll put them as a rotary, or we'll put them at the streets, uh, the municipal exemption would fit.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and, and I mean, honestly, those wayfinding signs for, those are for the community benefit, those definitely should be exempt, you know, so...
I know you're circling my bedroom at the same time, so we're talking about putting one outside of City Hall for the same...
And, and that, and, and again, I think that was when people were like, oh, we're gonna be Las Vegas.
Right, right.
It was like, hmm, I don't know, these are pretty expensive, but, you know. Um, I, I think people were worried about commercial use of them.
Right.
But at the end of the day, like, literally, right now, if you, if you have a storefront, you could put, uh, a sign inside of your window that's the size of the window.
Right.
And it could have any messages on you want, I mean, literally could be like, you know, crazy swirlies going all over the place that are really distracting, but, you know, cuz, you know, if you look at this, it's very, you know, um, each message can only be 30 seconds, uh, or it has to be at least 30 seconds, um, transition has to be less than one second, uh, the change of message must occur, must occur simultaneously on the entire face, so you can't have like scrolling.
That makes sense, cuz that's the strength.
Yeah, if you're driving, right, yeah, and, and, but, you know, some more of these things, no flashing, animations, scrolling, rolling, or running images or letters, must have the ability to respond to changes in ambient light, so have brightness and dimming controls, um, no message, or non-message and background lights shall be off, message lights shall be one color, so that, we might wanna revisit that, because I think that there's some signs that potentially could be to the owner that display more than one color. I'm pretty sure. So, I, I don't know if that's, if that's a, I would say that that's probably something that's changed at the federal highway administration level, because if you're driving down the highway and you see one of the giant LED billboards, they're not monochromatic, right? They have multiple colors, and, um, and I don't think that it's posing a problem for necessarily anybody, but, um, and then, one message center shall be permitted per property in allowed districts, which is mill industrial, and, um, and this is really interesting. So, um, you have to, in mixed-use industrial districts, the electronic messaging center sign is only permitted on properties with 100,000 square feet.
What? It's so funny coming back to these things after being like, what is the process here?
I remember when that got put in, it was...
So basically just the mills?
It was literally just the mills.
Oh.
So, uh, and, and it also says it shall not be illuminated between 11:00 and 7:00 AM. But again, if, you know, so I think what we need to do is we need to say, alright, we need to take a, make sure that the wayfinding signs, the electronic wayfinding signs are completely exempted, because obviously you need those 24 hours if people are driving and needing them.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so that's, that's like a big one that we need to fix. Um, and I would say, secondly, we need to, if we're gonna keep this language, we just need to tweak it a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, as far as exemptions, like, so let's just say that, you know, we did this, and we're like, okay, downtown business makes sense, highway business makes sense, mill industrial makes sense, even industrial makes sense, like, if, you know, like, one of those factories has a board that says, we're hiring, and...
Well, in the industrial, there's some areas where they have the, like, there's not a gas station, but they've got, oh, my, commercial oil, and they've got the prices of...
And is that electric?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, but then, like, for example, if, you know, the school, that's, that's in R-35, so that's not in one of our technical business districts, so I, I think looking at the municipal exemption would make sense.
Yeah.
Any municipal property, any municipal building...
And that would cover the school as well?
It would cover the school, yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's, I mean, that would be a costly mistake, having to take that sign down, um, cuz I think that sign's really expensive, at least it looks like it is.
Can I just say one thing about this before we get too far?
Yeah.
So I, I support the idea of everything that you're saying, that we should include that downtown business, highway business, industrial, mill industrial, plus any municipal properties, and maybe even allow a special permit process if somebody wants to get it somewhere else, if they've got some weird edge case that I can't exactly think of that makes sense.
Sure.
I'm, I'm completely fine with all of that, I'm completely fine with the municipal exemption. I do just wanna say, because we run into this every once in a while, that it sometimes troubles me how much the city struggles to follow its own laws.
Its own rules.
Because how, how do we honestly expect to look other people in the face and expect them to follow these rules when we do things like purchase huge signs that are not allowed? I mean, like, at this point, it's there, and I think it's a good point for us to go, and, well, and frankly, look, we've done this with the keeping of chickens thing, if you're spilling back, right? There was a rule, and the reason that we were prompted to say that rule doesn't actually make a ton of sense is because someone broke it and then was like, well, hold on, but why is this a problem?
Yeah.
So, in, in a way, it's, it's fine, but when it's, when it's, just a, a member of the community innocently breaks a zone, you know, doesn't think to check the zoning to see if something is allowed or not before they go in, that is understandable.
Yeah.
When we, the city, who are tasked with enforcing these rules, does it, it does sort of make me wonder how much moral authority we truly have to be like fining other people for breaking rules that we are not following.
Yeah.
So there is just an element of this, I just need to say this as a matter of record, that I find this, the fact that this is not the first time that we've been in a situation where the city says, hey, can we change this rule because we haven't been following it? I, I just, I, like, I'm laughing, but also, it's kind of a messed up situation, like, I'm...
And I don't, I don't know what the remedy to, I, I imagine that there was some sort of breakdown of, of process and communication around that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
And, and I think, I think it's really, you know...
There's a part, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, there's a part of me that just thinks we should gut this entire thing, because if the city is not expected to follow it, then why should we expect everyone else to put up all the LED signs you want wherever you want? you want? Like, I don't actually believe that, but you know what I mean?
I do, yes.
Where it's kind of like, well, apparently, apparently we can't be bothered to look at these things, so why should our taxpayers be bothered to, they should have to check before they do this stuff, but apparently, a multimillion-dollar construct, publicly-financed construction project can be bothered to look it up, so...
That's true. So, and, and I don't know if they somehow assumed that they were exempt on municipal property.
Sure, it would make sense.
It makes sense, so, you know, and I think this is a good, I mean, and it, this is good and bad, because, it's bad because it's embarrassing for the city, and it looks, it looks bad, but I think it's good because it, it gives us perspective on, okay, well, what are the, what are the reasonable pieces of this, that we wanna make sure stay in place to protect the character of the city, and what is reasonable to ask people to follow? You know, so, because it is, it's important to, to acknowledge that, and, you know, that this, the genesis of this is because it wasn't followed, and, and honestly, it doesn't make any sense for it to be taken down because it breaks an ordinance.
Or review.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is this in the zoning?
This is, this is, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say, we went through the whole ordinance review, and I thought I would've caught this, but we didn't do the zoning, 'cause that's an additional element.
Zoning is different, yeah, and I mean, that's another gigantic document.
But yeah, you know, I think the, you know, yes, it's a, it's a pause for us to be mindful of the types of ordinances that exist and whether or not we're following them, but I think also that the thing to consider is that the ubiquity of LED signs, since this ordinance was originally written...
That's true.
...has just become so saturated that I don't think people even question it, because the technology just exists everywhere.
Right.
You know, every council is brand new, and, you know, it is the job of all of us to kind of look back at previous work that's been done and decide, is something still relevant?
Right.
So I think this is, it's totally fine, and I mean, we can, we can figure out what it's gonna look like.
Yeah.
You know, whether we scrap the entire thing and write up something new, or change language, or whatever that looks like, but I, yeah.
Well, there, there's another, you know, layer to this, which is, you know, so we went through, I can't remember what year it was, we went through, it was about a year-long process of revamping the sign ordinance, which, you know, after we finished, we found, like, the Supreme Court ruled that...
It's old things unconstitutional.
Old things unconstitutional. You know, time, place, manner. And so there is a lot of time, place, manner in there, there's also some content stuff, so, but, you know, it's interesting, because in East Hampton, those, those blow-up, like, things, you know, it's like, and those flags, a flag that says open, all prohibited. A, a vehicle, I know, I think there's a company in Holyoke that does this, they have like large, like, LED billboards on the side of their truck, and you can pay them, and they'll drive through communities, that's, that's against the ordinance in East Hampton.
Are the sandwich boards still prohibited?
So we, we did, we were able to get sandwich boards, but we, they have, they have to allow for ADA compliant jobs. And I, I think there might've been a process, that was another, that was like, the sandwich boards was, that was like a big one, no? I think we spent like three months on that, so, you know, there are, I think, and I've been waiting for, because Jeff said that he wanted to dive back into the sign ordinance, just to like, you know, revisit it, clean it up, so I think that's gonna be on our docket probably, you know, this, next year. So there are some things that we will need to look at, you know, like, the tax person who has that, like, those things that...
Yes, exactly, I was thinking of.
Prohibited, that's prohibited, that's not allowed in East Hampton.
Riverside, too, hasn't it?
Yeah, but they're everywhere.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's against the ordinance, and, and, and then one of the count, previous councillors got in trouble, because, I don't know, remember Landry Furniture that was going out of business for like seven years?
Forever, yeah.
He took it upon himself to be the sign enforcer, and literally went around, picked them all up from everywhere, and then dumped them on Landry's.
Oh, my gosh.
So, as far as this goes...
Yeah.
I think probably the, what I can do, just so, you know, to, to make this efficient and, and get us out the door, is I can draw up a couple of options, municipal exemption, a, a look at, you know, allowing it in specific zoning areas, and maybe changing some of the stuff, and then when, at our next meeting, we can just kind of dig into that, and...
Yeah.
And, and in the meantime, if you, if you all have any feedback on the current thing, you know, like, obviously, we won't deliberate, but you can just send me some feedback, and I can see if I can work it into...
Okay.
The draft, and, you know, that way we can kind of get back to this spot and be efficient with it, so we don't have to like spend a ton of time on it.
That's great. I mean, my only thing is, you know, okay, so Jeff wants to dive back into the sign ordinance, so I do think we'll get another shot at a lot of this.
Yes.
I do think we should act relatively quickly to, at the bare minimum, exempt the city.
Yes.
So that we are not actively in the process of daily breaking the law, I just don't think that's a great look. What are we gonna define ourselves, like...
That doesn't fall under my purview, so...
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't even know if, if there's a fine, or what, I think it would be, I feel like probably the remedy would be some sort of a cease and desist.
Yeah.
And we don't want that.
So I think if we can't like figure out by the next meeting, like, a comprehensive solution, maybe we should just pass, like, do a quick patch, get that, and then we can take another stab at this with the whole...
With the whole thing, yeah. I think, I think that might be, I think that is, definitely will be something I'll bring for our next meeting, so, that way we can, if we need to move quickly, we can move quickly. Speaking of next meeting, let's take a look. Okay. Let's see, what is my schedule? All right, so we're into May now.
Yep.
Oh, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty open. You guys wanna do May ninth?
That works for me.
All right, let's do May ninth.
Great.
And I don't, Chief, I don't think you're gonna have to come on to that one, if, 'cause this one's going to...
Yeah, I'll be at the council.
Yeah, and six PM, guys?
Sure.[1747.62]